Next item.
Thank you, trustees.
Action items? At this time, I'm sorry, are there any agenda items on this agenda which board members or the superintendent wish to discuss and vote on separately? If there are, we will exclude these from the motion below.
Give everyone a second to see if there's anything that they want pulled. I didn't see anything that needed it.
I just have a question on number six.
So a question on six, all right.
Doesn't need to be pulled.
Thank you. Questions on any of the other action items? All right, Trustee Watts, if you could please state the action.
Move that action items numbered one through 12 be approved as recommended in this agenda.
Small move.
Support.
Motion by trustee Barry, supported by trustee Petlicoff. Trustee Mosip, if you can, want to go ahead with your question.
Yeah, so this is for the CIS contract. And year over year, it's getting increased because the number of full-time and part-time employees that we have or that are contracted through CIS. So I know it was subsidized through CIS, but right now, we're paying kind of the higher end. So I wanted to know, how long is that going to be happening even for next year? Is that going to be the same thing?
So it depends, trustee Mosip. You know, we do an overview every year of the program and see whether it's worth expanding, keeping, what are the benefits, you know, what are some of maybe the drawbacks, things that we want to improve. Now, for this particular situation, as I work very closely with the CIS executives, and we're constantly trying to work on situations where they can provide us with more grant money, so it can lower the cost of the district. For this particular situation, we felt it was worth the investment to increase from the half-time to the full-time, simply because the full-time staff, one, they're more integrated in the building, being there all the time, but also due to how kind of CIS is structured, they're able to do more with our students. So I wanted to ensure that if we were going to contract something and really get the best out of it, we're getting the best out of it. I work very closely with Tom Wall. A lot of this money is specific grant money that's used for affective education as well. Does that help, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
One more question on that than Mr. Salee. Has there been previous times where we've approved it and then additional grants come out throughout the year that offset a portion of the cost?
Yes, and that's actually something that we're looking at right now because we're anticipating possibly some higher grant money or some different types of grants that we've applied for. And if we can use that, we would shift over some of the dollars into these different grants.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, we have a motion by trustee Barry, and it was supported by trustee Petlicoff. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Summary of agenda action items. Number one, approval of warrants. Number two, approval of an award to Carouselless. Number three, approval of an award to MJK Educational Consulting per Board Report 23-33. Number four, approval of an award to We Shall Read per Board Report 23-34. Number five, approval of an award to Ingenuity, Inc. Number six, approval of an award to Communities and Schools per Board Report 23-35. Seven through 10, approval of non-instructional and instructional personnel items for P-12. Number 11, approval of financial statement per Board Report 23-40. And number four, approval of donations.
Next item?
Discussion items, there are none.
Great.
Next, Board of Education Business acknowledgements of correspondence.
I want to thank everyone for forwarding all the emails onto me, so I'm able to respond on behalf of the board. Next?
Board Member Committee and Organization Reports.
Trustee McDonald.
We had a building and site meeting just prior to this. It was a jam-packed meeting, so my notes are kind of all over the place. If anybody has someone, something to add that was in the meeting, a couple of my trustees were there, please jump on board. And you might have to be a little patient with me, I'm going from different pages. One of the things, one of the many things we talked about were the ESRS funds. And those are air handling and that's in HVAC, those are the things that can be used with those funds. Whitmore Bowls, the first bid pack was for Whitmore Bowls, Oakman, Snow, and DeVal. And those projects have been completed except just the tail end of, we have a piece of equipment that will not be shipped until October 2nd. And as soon as that piece comes in, then Whitmore, it was Whitmore Bowls.
Whitmore Bowls.
Whitmore Bowls will be completed as well. But it's gone well, and there was a lot of concerns about the disruptions with the start of the new school year, but everything went really well. We had our tradespeople come in and thank them for their help, and everybody just hopped in and really worked on getting it done for the beginning of the school year. So it went a lot smoother than was anticipated, and we appreciate that. There was investigations, part of the delay too, at Whitmore Bowls, there was concerns of possibility of lead paint at Whitmore Bowls. And the delay was, they had to really make sure that that was not the case. It was not the case, there was no issue found, but the process did delay the project some. ESRS 2, second bid pack, is Nolan, Howard, and Long. Those will start in November. And the question was brought up, some of the things that we replace when we're getting like new equipment into buildings, if it's equipment that was there that hasn't been there for a long time, what do we do with that? It is pulled out when it's replaced. If it's still in good shape, it's gone, and they use parts for it. So we recycle as much as we can to...
It's reused.
Oh, reused, I'm sorry.
As parts.
Reused as much as we can, as parts, to save some money. Let's see. One of the things, the money has been put into these big HVAC projects and things like that. And part of the downsides of that, the downside of that, is that things like carpeting and paint and the aesthetic stuff sometimes gets neglected because all the funds, the big money's going into these big projects. So, but those are the things that people see most often. So unfortunately, that is the downside. And some buildings have done what they can, if there's a major problem with the carpet or something painting like that, they have worked with their budgets to help make sure that that happens if it's, if it's absolutely, you know, a major problem. And the district also will do what they can to help if they, if they need to help individual buildings with those types of issues. Let's see. The electrical bus infrastructure, that should be tentatively completed by August of 2024. If you recall, the district did enter into a turnkey program with Highland, which will... It was a huge contract, but it wa, the, we are the first district to really have these buses get started. So the entire contract was gone through with a fine-tooth comb with legal, with Mr. Wall and others to make sure that the district would have the best benefit from this contract. There wasn't anything that was overlooked because there are some concerns. This is brand-new, a brand-new area. And with the turn, the turnkey contract, that puts all of the risk onto the Highland company. And we basically do not have any, we're not held harmless for, if a bus breaks down, they have to take those, those costs. All of those things goes on the Highland company.
You're saying that we are held harmless?
We are not.
We are not held.
We, we are not.
We are held.
Oh, I'm sorry, we are held harmless. We are not responsible, let me say it that way, thank you.
Thanks.
We are not responsible for the charges if a bus should break down, if a battery should have an issue, whatever the case may be. If the infrastructure has an issue, that is all on Highland. That's why it's a very extensive contract, and it had to be gone through very carefully. And it's brand-new. So we are the first district, they want to, they will work with us, and we will work with them to get it right because they want to move this to other districts as well.
And what she, we have 18 buses through the grant program on consi, they're, they're in the process of building them for us. They will be here between 2024, the end of 2024, and the beginning of 2025. With that said, we will have to then take out a commission, 18 diesel buses, and replace them with the 18 electric buses. So that's one of the trade-offs with this grant program from the federal government.
Thank you.
And we've built a charging station over at the bus station, or are in the process of building.
In the process of it.
To charge the...
Office Schaefer?
Yeah, yeah.
But that also will be charged to...
To Highland.
Highland will be paying for that.
Paying for the...
The charging stations, everything. So, um, let's see. The energy bond, this is a non-voter-approved bond, and that is to replace all the lighting in all of the buildings throughout the district. And it is moving along, but it's a huge project, so it will take some time.
They finished Fortson, changing out all the lights there, then moving on to Edsel.
Moving on to Edsel, I think was in October. I know it's in my notes somewhere, but there's notes everywhere. So, let's see. There's also, there's some work that's going to be done on Hague. We know that there will be six classroom additions and also the expansion of the cafeteria. The prep work will start in mid to late October with the expansion. All of that work will be outside of the building. None of the work will be done inside until...
Next year.
Next year. So you might see those things going on, but it's all outside the building.
So what, what they will see is, the foundation will be prepped, and then the exterior walls of the sixth classroom addition will be, but the breakthrough to the existing building will be held off until next year, so as not to disrupt the school day there.
Did you get a chance to look at the...
No, that, we didn't have any of the, what the architect plans look like for, but I think we've seen it in the past.
Yeah, I'll resend the architectural plans to you, so you can see what it is.
I guess my question would be, are we taking advantage of that property we bought in the city?
Yeah, I asked that question.
Yep, we discussed it at great length because this project won't be available till the 24, 25 school year, so now's the time to have that conversation, that we know what the planes are, what the dimensions are.
And what we're using.
How are the students going to be able to move around at recess and things like that? Yes. But just one other thing, I just want to make sure you guys are aware, the bids for the Hague addition is coming to the October board meeting for approval. Just so you're aware that, you know, we're still waiting for that, and that's why the construction will start after the bids are approved.
You might not want to go too far, Mr. Wall. Okay, we also had a lot of summer projects that were completed. Again, this is by our in-house trades groups and personnel. So some of those are Bryant, the home economic classroom, was converted into a science STEM room. Long had the virtual administrative office was, is now a media center. Asphalt repairs at Henry Ford, Howard and Dearborn High. Edsel Ford landscaping improvement at the main entrance. Edsel Ford wood shop and weight room conversions. Maple security vestibule conversions. And tennis court repair, repairs at Edsel Fordson and Dearborn. Again, these were done through our in-house building trades, so thank them for their hard work.
Any questions?
I'm not done. I told you, it was...
It was a long...
It was a long and very, very busy meeting.
He's sending you a signal.
Our meeting, okay, well, we...
Take your time, just kidding.
Now I'm gonna slow down. Let's see, we are doing also the 2023 switch and cabling installation schedule. We're changing out the fibers and the switches, and this is, this has come from the enhancement fund plus $2.8 million in reimbursements by the feds.
After the projects are done.
After the projects, it's a reimbursement by the feds, yeah.
This is, so this is through the Wayne County Millage?
Yes, this is the enhancement millage.
And it's at every school?
Yeah.
That they're, so there's going to be an individual project throughout the district.
We have the M, the MISC, MICEC, Choice Solar. There's, Mr. Wall? I'm gonna let you explain this, because this is something new to us.
We, we buy our electrical gas on the commodity market. We've been with MISC, MICEC for at least, they've been in place for at least 30, 40 years, we've been with them all that time. And they have saved us money, millions of dollars over that lifetime, of be able to buy electrical and gas costs on the market cheaper than what we would get directly billing with MDE or DTE. What they are now looking at is a solar farm where they are going to have a portion of investment into it, where they were able to buy excess energy developed by the solar farm back to the grid and be able to give us a flat price of .062 going forward for the next 15 years. Now, the savings comes from, as you well with any market with commodities, it goes up and down, but over time, it generally goes higher. So if we have the opportunity to invest a portion of our commodity costs for electricity in the market and keep it stable and the same at .062 for the life of that term. So what they're doing is giving us the opportunity on the front end in a reduced price to get the volume, so they can go and negotiate a better price from the solar farm on districts that are willing to commit early on for a portion of their commodity. You can do anywhere from 0 to 100%. We, I don't believe putting 100% in any kind of, you know, market program is good, so we're work, looking around 30%. So we had the conversation about what that program means, how it works at our Building and Site Committee today. There really doesn't require any board approval because it's energy costs, and we manage that on a day-to-day basis as it is, mostly out of Operations Department, but we just want to bring the idea to them that, one, we're looking at when it makes sense to get involved in solar. If we can actually have a fixed price for utilities for the next 15 years for a portion of our costs, makes easier budgeting, and also helps make schools more greener as we go forward.
We also talked, there was a proposal to have a cell tower at O.L. Smith, and that was declined, absolutely declined, that will not happen. And then there is a cell tower at Edsel that is at its end of its lease, so we will not be renewing that. That particular self, cell tower is on top of a light pole, so it has to be removed from the light pole. And one of the issues too was accessing the light with the tower around it, so that will happen as well.
Do we have a timeline on that, assuming that it's, it's the football...
October 23rd, October this year, I think.
So just about the end of the season?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, we won't actually do it until the summertime because we have, we have field in use in the fall and the spring, so we'll do that over the summer of next year.
Okay.
And then there was a discussion on graduation and the possibility of...
The graduation venue.
The, right, graduation venue. And the possibility of maybe having an alternate venue. Now, this was just, this is the first time it's been brought up. There's been some concerns, so basically, I'm going to tell you a little bit of what the, our discussion was, and it was that they were looking for some direction from the board, if we just, right now, here and right now, decide this is not a good idea, we're not going to pursue it at all, or perhaps we need to discuss it and, you know, see, see where we go. But part of the, there were some issues with the way graduation is now because it's held at each, and I know it's tradition, it's absolutely the way that we've done it, but because those graduations are held at each high school, and you have to have a contingency plan if it rains, so you have to have indoor space available. And we have in the past, not often, thank goodness, but we have had to make that adjustment, and it is very hectic and chaotic, and it makes people angry, so that's difficult. There is also, it's very expensive, we were running three different graduations at different venues on different days. One of the things, or part of the, one of the things that could be better is, we would have to have a venue, we're looking for a venue perhaps, to cover all of the students so it would happen at one day in intervals. We'd have one in the morning, one in the afternoon, one in the evening. With an inside, it would be an inside venue.
Climate control.
So you have climate control, you don't have to worry about that, and technology is there now so that you can project students on the, on a big screen so everybody can see. You could probably have more tickets available because those are large venues, so instead of being stuck with, you know, you're only allowed two tickets or four tickets for your family or whatever the case may be, this possibility of having, you know...
Think about a university stadium.
Yes.
Kind of setting.
Where, and other districts do do this with their high school graduations, where everybody
attends, but it, the, the downside would be, it would not be within the city of Dearborn because we don't have any facility that could manage a high school graduation with the attendees as well. So we would have to be looking at another outside entity to hold a graduation, schedule a day, and have it one, two, three. It would really be a different kind of experience than what everybody's used to. So whether anybody wants to pursue that conversation still or not, it was just brought up as a, a, a starting place.
And there's a lot of pros and cons to both of them. And one of the things that Mr. Muston and I talked about is that his, the way that he was thinking, we could probably do it if we were to decide to go in that direction, is maybe the incoming ninth grade class at the schools, not this year, but, you know, an incoming ninth grade class, will tell them, we, this change is going to happen, and you will be the first class that this change happens with, and we want your input. These are the things that we can have, we can have screens, we can have lighting, we can do, this is going to be your new tradition, so what do you want to do? How would you like it to be done? So of course, it's changing from our tradition, but there's ways to do it, to make it individual to the school, and to have the students really embrace it because it's part of their creation. So anyway, those are just some pros and cons, some things to think about.
You also talked about transportation.
Yeah, absolutely. That transportation would be, could be made available to a different venue if that was a need. So there's a lot of, some of the, the negatives could be overcome. So if you want to continue with the discussion, then we can do that if you just like the way it is, tradition is tradition, and we just keep it, that's the, the direction that they're looking for.
So trustees, would we want to discuss this as a full board here right now, or would we want to talk to the committee members on our own to let them know how to move forward? Anyone's feelings on that?
I guess I would lean towards, you know, this is tradition, like trustee McDonald said, very rarely do we ever take graduations inside. I know it happened a few times, but very rarely. So I guess I would like to see, I mean, I can have some more discussions with the committee and get the pros and cons. If we had to make a decision tonight, I would be against, but...
Oh, yeah, this would...
No, I'm not saying we're gonna, I'm saying if we had to, that's where I would be, but I'm willing to listen to you, so.
So I would just...
This would be, once, I'm sorry, this would be like an all-day thing.
Yeah. One day.
Was there an example, like what hours it was set?
I think just, you know, pulling it out of a hat, it was like 10 o'clock for one, 3 o'clock for the other, one, 6 o'clock for the other.
This would make a long day for...
It would be...
Yes, it would.
Yeah.
All of us.
But it's one day instead of three, so...
Actually...
Pros and cons.
Five, I think, when you count...
Well, would, yeah, would we also be talking about the, the smaller ceremonies as well?
Yeah, well, the smaller...
We didn't have, we didn't get into that detail.
Yeah, we didn't get into that detail. I don't know.
Well, if we're going to say everybody, then that would mean everybody.
The smaller ceremonies have happened in the, the largest classroom over there at the Berry Center.
Right. And, and with that, it's easy to take it inside.
One of the drawbacks would be for me is that we're telling the parents, we're leaving the city of Dearborn to celebrate your graduates, and that would be like, I could just imagine...
It would, it would be a hard song.
I just would imagine, yeah, well, we'll see.
Trustee Watts?
Well, I think part of it is not knowing what, I'm trying to think of what would be somewhat nearby and reasonable distance to travel, that would be indoor, that would be able to accommodate all of these students and parents, and I can't, was there a discussion as to what those options would be? What was the closest one?
Wayne State.
I was gonna say, then you've got parking.
Say downtown Ran Arbor.
But then you've got parking, that, when you have a lot of, I mean, I would imagine a lot of people that aren't accustomed to those streets, you've got one ways park, I mean, I think it's going to be...
Right, that's why we said, that's what I brought up, yeah. But that was just one suggestion.
Ice Arena in, well, it's not Novi, it'd be Northville.
USA Hockey.
Yeah, USA Hockey was one of them.
That's a bit of a travel.
How many parents are actually, like, let's say, for example, like Edsel Fordson and Fortson, I know a lot of people walk over to the graduation.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's a good...
Do we really want to have this discussion at the same time we're having discussions we're going on, asking the taxpayers for money and the parents for money, so?
Yeah, it's a good...
Consider it.
I think, I think the topic was introduced to us because the conversations been...
I get that, I get that, yeah.
Over the years, and, and principals have maybe said, could we do it differently? Because it's a lot of, they, they have to double up on everything, they got to prepare the inside, at the same time, they have to prepare the outside, kind of thing, so I guess it was just thoughts, thoughts out there.
Actually, Mr. Martin and I have a great idea. We need to go back and visit what we did in 2020. I mean, I'm being serious, I'm being serious.
Getting the...
I'm there, I gotta sit in the hot sun for 90 minutes to hear my son or daughter's name, and sometimes I miss my son's daughter's name because of all the noise. But then when we did it, especially at Dearborn High, it was a...
Where they had, yeah, on a screen.
10 seconds, the parents were like right there, it was a great experience. Anyways, to be continued, I guess.
Yeah, okay.
Anything else from the committee?
I think that was it.
No, that was it.
All right, were there any other committee meetings in the last month? Next item?
Board Member and Superintendent Commentary.
I will mention that there, to all the trustees, be on the lookout from an email on the college side from President Cavalluna regarding an item for Ms. Dimitru, her last board meeting with us is next week. So just be on the lookout for that one. The Dearborn Education Foundation has a golf fundraiser coming up on Friday, September 29th. All the funds that the Education Foundation raises go back into the classroom to support items that the regular budget does not include. So if you are either interested in golf, or interested in dinner, or interested, I'm assuming there'll be some type of auction, you can go online to their website and get more information on that one.
And we have the Big Shot ticket, so even if they can't attend, they can purchase the Big Shot, that'll be draw, the drawing will be on...
And I'm sure they also have openings for sponsorship, so.
Additional commentary from trustees? Dr. Maliko, you had one item?
Just one I want to clarify too, since it was coming up all about investigations. One thing I want people to know based on state law, so when we hire employees, we're required to do, so we do, we're adamant about reference checks and professional, but you also have requirements, and just so the parents know, on first of all, criminal checks, which is required by law. Secondly, we call it the misconduct form must be shared between districts, but that's up to the receiving district, meaning the district that accepts a teacher that worked in another district or another school, to contact that district and receive it. That is something that we do. So if someone did, for example, especially when you're dealing with, you know, shortages, if someone were to move in a different, you know, was in a different district and had performance, the district is obligated to report that to us as a receiving district. We're obligated to report that to the outgoing district. Again, that district would have to contact us like we contact them, but I want parents to know so that when, not only, you know, misconduct, but we're also checking professional references, and we talk to the principals all the time, and it's on the forms, to make sure that we're really looking to see that they're good fits for our district. So I just, I just felt like that also needed to be put out there for the parents.
Trustee Petlicoff?
And to that point, if another school in another state doesn't do their due diligence and/or, you know, because I'm not certain, and maybe you can answer this for me, when someone is fired within our district or let go for misconduct of any kind, I know that lawyers and doctors can lose their licensing, is there anything that, where a teacher could lose their certification depending on what level, what degree of...
Yeah, some of it is required, some of it is required to be reported to the Michigan Department of Education, including tenure proceedings, and there's a question on there where it's, comes from the Michigan Department of Education for renewal, which is talks about misconduct. So that is absolutely a requirement for reporting.
So could they, could a teacher lose their certification?
Yes, yes.
Is there anything on applications that requires people to let us know if there's been any accusations of misconduct with previous employers?
I don't think there, I don't think you can do that.
Can't do that.
Accusations, because again, I...
The application says, have you been convicted of a felony? And then the other questions are...
And then the other questions are along the lines of, like, have you ever been terminated from a district?
Or misconduct too, they have to fill.
Does it say the word misconduct? I'm not sure if it says misconduct on there, but we do the misconduct forms. So other district asks us, ask us about misconduct and we ask other districts with a, a formal, a form that we use.
And we require reference calls.
Oh, yeah.
By all of, you know, when I'm hiring administrators, I make multiple calls, not just what's on the application, but people I know. And we do that with the principals when we train them as well.
Trustee Barry?
I think reference calls are more important than anything, but because of the, and when you asked that question, the thing I thought about, I won't even mention this city as an example, but if a different district, something happened there, alleged, and there was an agreement, hey, you go away and we're not going to fire you, we just want you to be gone. And then they decided to come to Dearborn. They can probably, they, they can honestly fill out that application and be truthful. That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
References are the most important. People, you'll get a lot of, people will tell you about misconduct or alleged misconduct.
Trustee Watts?
Dr. Milaico, you may have mentioned it, but for the staff, I mean, everyone who walks into the building needs to have an iChat. And then are we also requiring fingerprints for staff, but not for?
For staff is required by state law.
But not for volunteers?
Volunteers is the iChat.
It's just the iChat, correct? I guess as board, I mean, I'm used to use, taking all of the, make, doing the iChat and the fingerprint. As board members, do we have to do that as well? I mean, if we're walking into the school buildings,
If you're volunteering, I think you, iChat, it would be an iChat.
So all of us should be doing, should have the iChat yearly, correct?
If you're just coming in for an event, you're not, but if you're a,
I remember we did fingerprinting, fingerprints for one of the, one of the, um, when we had a vacancy on the board.
I done fingerprints.
You did, yeah, so we do do fingerprints.
I guess I've been on too long.
It is required, okay.
Yeah, actually, I do remember that.
I don't remember if I did or not, but I was thinking, we're going throughout the building as well, so we should be modeling, obviously, all of those safety protocols as well.
Correct.
Okay.
You know what, it's a, I'm glad that iChat was mentioned because we're starting a new school year. Parents are going to want to come into the classrooms and help. The iChat is good for two years, three years?
We can get back to you on that.
All the parents, go into your schools and see if your iChat is up to date or if you need to get it updated before you want to help out with something.
We can do a reminder on the blog. To say how often that you need to do it.
The other thing with the state system, they have an automated system through the Michigan Department of Education. If someone, because they're in the fingerprint system, we have over 2,700 employees, they're all in the system and registered. And what'll happen is I will get an email that might say there's been, so someone, if, if someone was arrested or something happened after the fact, we get notified. Most of the time what happens is we get the alert and then that employee may have, it could have been a sub or it could have been someone that's no longer working for us. But we do get those notifications. They don't come very often, but the system is set up so it can actually track the fingerprint system of future potential, uh, criminal acts or arrests that occur.
Okay, I guess that was my going to be follow-up, but the iChats every two years, then what happens on a, you know, on a daily basis? So you, it's the fingerprints that have that, okay. So it's updated all the time.
Fingerprints have that system.
Is there a cost for that iChat?
Um, no, we get it free as a public school system, but there would be a, public can go and fill out an iChat, but they have to pay.
It's like $10 or $12.
I guess, uh, I was going along with, uh, Trustee Watts was thinking, it's going to be in your mind. If there's no cost, why wouldn't we run it every year? A lot can happen between,
But if we have the fingerprint, then the fingerprint would be,
That's like, that's like an update, yeah.
We can look into that, we can talk to legal on that.
Trustee McDonald?
Just a quick question. You said that you do get those bulletins if there's a, an issue with, um, someone. Do we keep that information? Do we have it?
It's secured and only certain people access it. It goes to Ms. Almadine and Ms. Courtney Plotsky that HR, they go on, but it's, and they get audited as well. They get the iChats and all that, every year I think we do get, we're a big district, so they tend, the state police tend to audit how we keep our records.
Okay. My, my concern was just that, uh, if we had one, if we didn't keep it 10 years down the line, somebody came to the district. I was just wondering if we would be able to access that information?
Yeah, it would come up again if someone had a criminal offense because it would come up once they tried to re, to come back.
To apply, okay.
Even when retirees leave us and then they come back to work, they have to go through fingerprinting again.
Okay.
Even if they worked for us for 30 years.
Okay.
And the state law became very strict in 2007, eight is when they changed the system. It's much more technology friendly and now it's even, over the years, even gotten better, so.
Two other quick items and commentary. Trustees, you should be seeing in the weekly board briefs about training opportunities that are available for us. Uh, I know there's a couple of different opportunities coming up in October. I want to say October 26th is one, and I want to say that through Wayne County. I believe there was something on October 12th, perhaps, about, um, either upcoming, uh, board presidency training or, uh, running an organizational meeting perhaps. But I forget which group's doing that. In November, we've got the MAS, the Michigan Association of School Boards Annual Leadership Conference happening in Lansing. Last month, we went through and, uh, nominated who will be there for the, um, for the Thursday night sessions. But there's plenty of classes available there, uh, so continue to look at that. Also, that we got an email, uh, from Dr. Chokel letting us know about an event going on over at Salina. Several of us were at the event for the Green Schoolyards right after the school year, but there's another fundraiser coming up for that one on September 19th. So that's another opportunity to help out there at Salina. I got a chance to go look at that mural on the second day of school with the flag raising. It is an amazing thing to see that one in person.
True, that do mind, President Thor, it's a few months off, but the national conference is also in April, April 6th through 8th, NSBA.
And where's that one this year?
New Orleans.
New Orleans? Okay, all right.
I wanted to add and get guidance for this one. So, um, MCCA was able to contract with ACCT for the college for some additional training in December. So I will share that with everybody's college email, just a heads up on that one as well.
Thank you. All right, next item?
Request for information and/or future agenda items.
Trustee Barry?
Yes, uh, I was very happy to hear that the cell tower was turned down at committee at Smith and now we're not going to renew it so forward. Dr. Milaico, I'd like to see a list of where we have towers and when they expire, please. Thank you.
Trustee Moser?
Yeah, I've, just looking over the resignations that we approved tonight, there are too many. And, um, some of them actually, um, the hire date is within a year or two. Some are this year. Uh, I don't have access anymore to the, um, exit interviews. I think the last one that I have is March 15th. So if that can be updated, where we can see the 15th to right now. But I'd like, it doesn't have to be right now, but I would like the superintendent to give us an update about the resignation, especially the ones that are very short.
Trustee Watts?
Um, and this can just be added to board briefs, but there was a mention about the Michigan Child Protection Law. And I think that's something that we should be having in board briefs so that all of us are well-versed as to our obligations.
One policy that was mentioned in several emails that the board's seen recently is in regards to graduation and the requirements for students. It's Policy 5460. Uh, when reading that policy, one of the things it talks about is the requirements for graduates from 2016 to 2024. Knowing that that is our senior class, I know we need to start working on things for the, the junior class and younger so that they know what they're going to need to do. So if we can start, uh, working on, uh, updating that policy. Any other requests for information or agenda items? Next item?
Future meeting dates. Monday, this has been canceled, Monday, September 18th, 2023, HFC Board of Trustees Policy Meeting. That has been canceled. Next Monday, September 18th, 2023, HFC Board of Trustees Meeting, 7:00 PM at the Administrative Services and Conference Center in the Rosenau Board Room. Monday, October 9th, 2023, P12 Board Meeting, 7:00 PM at the Administrative Service Center in the Frank Franchi Board Room. And something to keep a lookout for policy. The P12 Policy Committee will be, um, meeting again hopefully here by the end of the month. We have some policies that we need to, um, continue to update. And if anybody has a policy that they would like to add to the agenda, please email me.
Trustee McDonald?
The Policy Committee meeting for the college was canceled, that's correct?
Correct.
There was a building and sites meeting that was added.
Okay.
So I just,
Do we, do we know the time for the, the Building and Site Committee for the college?
I'm sorry?
Do you know a time?
I believe it's 6:00.
Okay.
I will double check, but I believe it's 6:00.
We'll ask the college to make sure that it's posted. Anything else for the good of the order? With that, we adjourned, everyone have a great evening.